This is the first full meeting of the planning committee from this new council group. So I would like to welcome everyone. There's apologies from Jim Driver, it's a personal issue, from councillor Young, it's a family matter, and from councillor Huxley who's on holiday. Also Chair councillor Crittenden who's unwell. Ah, and councillor Crittenden, I haven't heard who is unwell. Are there any declarations of interest? No? Okay, well we have three planning applications to deal with this evening, so could we start off? Thank you. You know, there's two on the same property. Councillor Alvin, you called this one in, I think.
Oh really?
Why did you call this? Oh yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to see Chair, in relation to the UPVC SASS windows as it is in the conservation area. And I know we've discussed this, this kind of issue before. I mean, there are, you know, listening, reading the, reading the issue here, the installers are saying it's one of the best UPVC SASS windows that are around, and they have been approved elsewhere. But that doesn't mean to say that we have to give Ramsgate some counselling. So I just wanted to see how many were for members of Seattle, what they think the impact would be.
So the top white bits, so it's the six windows at the top that they're being replaced. They are life alike, so they're the same style, and that's according to the conservation office. It don't leave that the applications to see that the impact of the proposed window of replacement would have on the surrounding historical environment, and therefore does not comply with the planning policy. But these are the styles by the company that they propose to use.
So it sets precedent if we let this go through, because everybody else will say they've got it, why can't we? Chair. Does anybody, councillor Green, thank you.
Yeah, my concern is the question, is it? I mean, I personally think the really good UPVC windows are okay, but really the council needs to address this in terms of the conservation areas. And so they do, I don't think I should accept.
Yes, thank you councillor Green. Councillor Green?
I'm mindful to, I think there's no problem for a number of reasons, and it comes from some of the planning applications we've had at planning. And also a complaint I put in for a resident on a property in Spencer Square, Spencer Square, that had, wasn't listed, it's in the conservation area, and had replaced a window with a UPVC window, which was totally out of keeping. And when I forwarded that to planning enforcement, thinking something would happen, I was told they could do that under general permitted development rights, which was the same issue we have with that development in Margate, where we actually approved the windows, because this way we get some control over the style of UPVC that's being put in. My belief, or my understanding is that this, they could just simply replace these windows under general permitted development rights, based on what I was told about Spencer Square, in which case we would have no control over what was being put in. At least this way we have some control.
Thank you councillor Green. Councillor Alvin?
Yeah, just to, just to set the matter straight. If people put UPVC windows in a dwelling, one dwelling, in a conservation area, that is permitted development doesn't require consent, in this case it's a flat. They are flats above shops, which is different. Flats are not considered to be a single dwelling, and therefore, and therefore, they do need consent.
All right.
Just to finish, I think, I'll go along with what councillor Green said. In relation to, until something is resolved, the government are saying that planning laws need to be relaxed as far as listed buildings and properties in conservation areas are concerned, regarding keeping the properties warm. We all know, our big house with, you know, SASS windows and the draft that comes in, et cetera, et cetera. But until such time as the government change the law and allow such things, and I would with councillor Green on that.
Councillor Green? So if I was Crafty, I would replace one flat's window at a time, because it's a single dwelling, and I don't know if it's a single.
Not a single dwelling. Flats are not considered singular.
Does anybody, councillor Austin?
I just wanted to say that whatever we say in our comments, can we urge Danick District Council to make the current situation clearer on the website? Because I'm told that the information is there, every time I ask about this, I'm told the information is there, but I can't find it.
Can we do that, do you want to?
Yeah. So many people get in touch with their ward councillor and ask them about this, and there's so many, so much muttering around about what you can and can't do in a conservation area. I think we could do with something a bit clearer, even if it's to say our hands are tied at the moment, waiting for the government to say X or Y.
You councillor.
I could propose to Chair that we reject the application on the grounds of the effect on conservation area. And if such time as the government changes restrictions, we will sit at effect.
Okay, thank you. Sorry councillor Green?
I accept that that's true as far as listed buildings are concerned, that's something the government's to know. But I think the, what's specified in the conservation areas, I think it stands to TDC, isn't it?
Councillor Green? Can we amend Steve's motion by adding greater clarity for TDCs needed, particularly for properties in conservation areas?
That's not in, that's relevant to the.
To the application.
Application, we're doing that anyway, sorry.
We could do that after.
I seem to remember during last time we set up the conservation areas in Cliftonville, and rewrote the specification.
I'd like to come back Chair. Yeah, I think there has always been issues in relation to UPVC windows in conservation areas. We challenged it, we challenged the conservation area issue, because Canterbury always said, no, you can't have them. Anyway, we challenged that and we were advised from government that we don't need consent in a conservation area. The only thing you can do, which I think you may be thinking about, David, was taking away their permitted development rights. So that you form a policy and then take away the development, you serve a notice that you can't do anything to the property without making an application.
Councillor Austin, you wanted to.
I was just going to say, I'm assuming that if the conservation officer has said this isn't acceptable, it's because under TDC's current rules, whatever those, whoever's decided on, it's not acceptable.
Yeah, it's under policy, yeah.
So what is the motion? Yeah, could you say your motion again?
Well, just the motion really is for us to say that we're not in agreement with the application and go along with the conservation officer's advice and recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Can we second that? Sorry, you'll second that part, thank you very much. So can we vote on that please?
Is that in favour?
Thank you Dean. Right, the next application's been called in by councillor Austin. He's called.
Any problems?
Brockenhurst Road.
Yes. Yes, council to say how easy we are to see this application, and that we thought it wholeheartedly. It's time Dame Janet got some recognition, it's time Ramsgate got some recognition for having had one of the first female mares in the country, let alone in Kent, and had indeed a succession of illustrious female mares since. And we should be praising Slum for bringing this suggestion, and also for all the work that she's done on the 2023 campaign. I wonder if perhaps the council might like her and say how she's been doing. The stuff on Facebook at the moment is fascinating.
It is brilliant.
The huge amount of detailed research that that history group has gone into, and the further reading, if you're interested in this character, here's a film you can watch, or whatever, all sorts of stuff. It's brilliant.
Councillor Nicksey?
Is it possible, I realise that again, we're sort of like, you know, I might not be offering this for every organisation, so can you talk about this? But is it possible for us to promote that information wider, or have it on the RTC website as well, for people to maybe access it better?
I think that would be an excellent idea, yeah.
I think that needs to be done, we need to deal with the application, and then, but as you say, afterwards, yeah.
Maybe something at the Amazon magazine.
Yes, something like that.
I think that has.
I'm talking about more information actually on the website, pushed through social media, but yes.
So councillor, I'm sorry councillor.
I propose, I propose no objection whatsoever.
Can we say that we thoroughly support this decision?
Absolutely.
I see why it's approved.
Councillor Alvin, that work.
And do we all vote for that?
No, it's, it's patented and.
Oh yeah, yeah, both of you.
So do we take a vote on that?
I second that.
Yes, can we vote on that please?
Yes.
Okay, that looks like it's unanimous. It's what I like to see.
Unanimous.
Just breaking some gentle.
Right, and the third application tonight is number 24 Spencer Square, and this has been called in by councillor Austin.
Just because I thought that as it's a substantial amount of work being done to a building in a conservation area, I thought we should have a look at it, although I don't think there is a problem.
It's right at the back of mine.
Yes. So yes, it's going to stay. Oh yes, councillor Green knows. Councillor Green knows a lot more about this than I do, so.
But this, yes, please do. I don't particularly have any problem with it. I don't think they're doing anything that would destroy a beautiful building. You know, we live in a road where everybody overlooks everybody, that's just the way it is. And it does generate a community feel, because most people accept that that's where we go. I think, I think, I've actually bumped into the owners as well, and I get a little sense of they genuinely want to keep the original features and just enhance the building. I think is there one bit lower down where some doors are now, which, you know, they're below, I don't think they're doing, I don't think they're doing any.
Below the street line, yes.
Below the street line, so those back courtyards can be very, very dark, so it's a good way of letting some light in.
Yes, I went round and had a look at this.
It does need some tender loving care, and I think it's going to get tender loving care.
Thank you. Councillor Nicksey?
I have no comment now.
Second actually.
Now, can we vote on that please? Thank you. We've got a third item, and we weren't sure on here, do you think we need to make this confidential?
Actually, can we just clarify that, so we've got two applications for Spencer Square about the same thing, that actually the no comment applied to both of those.
Can we just confirm that that was the case?
Yeah, thank you.
I think it's one of conservation, it's a listed building. It's very confusing, because they come in separately, if it's a listed building.
Do you do four one?
Yes, we, Nora and I talked about this actually earlier on, yeah.
Actually, may I talk about this, Dean? The Chair is going to ask you if you want the following item of business to be confidential. And I would say that actually, the matter before you, a request for zebra, two zebra crossings by the school is not a confidential matter. The only reason that I've given you the option of going into confidential is because of the accident involving a diner that's triggered this request, which should not be discussed in the public domain. So if you feel that the matter can be discussed without referring to the specifics of the accident, I would suggest that this can be discussed in public.
Heard of it, councillor Alvin?
Yeah, I think we should discuss it in public.
Okay.
What we can do is do not mention the person, the young person.
The incident, yeah.
And stick to the subject and matter. I think it's, it would be good for any barriers who are listening.
Yeah, I mean, it's an important issue, yeah. Councillor Nicksey, councillor Maitinson?
I'm taken aback in some ways about how few zebra crossings this town does have in places as well. I think they're needed, and so to see this on that particular road outside a school is pleasing under unfortunate circumstances, so I need for it quite honestly.
Thank you councillor Maitinson.
I see this every morning up to my window, trying to cross the road, and I think we need more of a separate crossing.
I think we need a pelican crossing, right? Is there any else? Thank you councillor Maitinson.
I mean, I agree with this, I mean, this is, I think this is the first step, and there are too many places in Ramsgate where there is no safe crossing, particularly for, shall I say, slower people, and they could be slower because they're little, or because they're vulnerable. I mean, the Grange Road really annoys me, obviously the doctors, I constantly see old people with zimmer cones trying to get across the road. So, yeah, this is the first step, and I think, I think we need to try and champion more. And I think there should be controlled crossings as well, because very rarely do you actually see people stuck to allow people across. So, yeah, it's a first step, and we should wholeheartedly support this and encourage more.
Yes, yeah. Has anybody else got anything to say at this stage? So councillor Green?
I was going up Bounder Road when this happened, I didn't see it happen, but we all had to turn around in the road and come back down, because you couldn't go down that side of the street. And so it might be a good idea to have a crossing in Bounder Road, which is not far from the school, but there'll probably be loads of kids coming up that way.
There's one on Bounder Road and one.
I think the town clerk needs to say something about this.
Actually, we've got some.
We talked about this earlier.
So I've got some further information from the author, that they've been in, so at the time of the initial request coming in, I believe that it was support for the proposal that was sought from the town council. It was intended that the school and the families were going to fundraise. The contact has been made with Kent County Council, who have reported that this work cannot be funded with fundraising. And the recommendation was to bring it to the town council to add it to our highways improvement plan. We can, we do have the power to accept funding, so it could well be something that we can accept the fundraising and then KCC to do the work. With relation to the highways improvement plan, there's been difficulty identifying the priorities, because KCC were only going to give the manpower to us as they would to a small parish. KCC have come back to say they'd be receptive to considering that we have seven highways improvements plans, and we could have one per ward, if that would help us come up with a priorities list.
Sorry Dean. I mean, the highway improvement plan, when I walked around my entire ward, the key thing that came out was safe crossing places, lots, I spoke to lots of people, so I was absolutely welcome a crossing somewhere in my ward, in our desperate, seven or eight, I mean, one would be a good start.
Councillor Alvin?
Yeah, I'm just, I have issues with KCC's saying about the delivery of any highway improvement plan. That has been going on a history of years already, when we met with, they were online, councillor Maitinson was with me, and, you know, it wasn't the best meeting in the world, so I have some issues about that, as to how long KCC will take to do it. Not saying we shouldn't do it and put it in our way, but I think there must be other avenues. And the question, I wanted to know whether we've got any contact at all from the MP?
Not.
McKinley?
Not the MP, but I have had the input from councillor Constance in time.
Right, I think obviously the email was sent to, for some reason, sent to Roger Gallow, which, you know, obviously is in the wrong constituency. So if Craig McKinley is not aware of this, then I do think that we need to contact the McKinley and ask for his full support, and I'm sure, I'm sure he will give it, sure you will give it. Mr McKinley, because I think it's important our MP gets involved in something like this, because he could highlight the matter far better than we can with Kent County Council.
Yes, thank you Steve. I'm sorry, councillor Maitinson then councillor Green?
I mean, I have been trying to get something done there for, I would say, seven years. I talked to, first of all, Trevor Shank, who lives just next to it. And all I got was, oh, I tried to do it and they put something further up the road, which I think they did. Councillor Constantine just said, no, no, they won't do it. And that was the end of it, and I sent her photographs and photographs of these kids trying to get across the road. So hopefully she's changed her tune on that. Because she, then she said to me something like her councillors' allowance wouldn't pay for it. And I'm thinking, who's asking you to pay for it? We want the county. And we also walked her flashing lap at twenty mile an hour things near schools. And that one in particular, because they travel between the schools all day long, and it's very fast road, very fast.
Thank you, thank you. It was councillor Green, then councillor Austin, then councillor Arora?
I was going to say, I think, I think KCC councillor Shank paid for the road, the dip bit, you know, the nipples that come in up on that cliff, so he did at least try to do something on that cliff. But I was going to say, do any of us know where the High Street fund money and the road changes at the bottom that would have incorporated Leopold Street, where of course that tragic event was? Because where is the money that's supposed to be happening?
Yeah, that's it.
Is it done?
I, Chair.
Councillor Alvin, sorry, answer that, and then we go to councillor Austin, councillor Arora.
Because that would solve a lot of that, that would solve one problem, the town centre.
Right, shall we get back to that then, councillor Austin? Councillor Austin, do you want to?
I think maybe you should come first, because I was just going to mention that, yeah, yeah.
Can we ask councillor Austin?
What I can say is that if, all councillors should have had notification from the director of regeneration, cerning that specific funding, what's to happen to it, they should have, they should have been notified of that. And what I can say is that the first levelling up fund and all of the other funds are to be discussed at the end of this month. So, and there are various issues, I can't go into those issues right now, but it will become clear.
I thought the work was, we were just waiting for a date to start, and it was going to be done in the winter and not the summer, so the whole road should have been done by now.
Well, of course it should have been done, I totally agree with you.
Probably about 12 months ago, so.
Totally agree with you.
It's just the wall of silence, so it's definitely something we need to ensure they don't try and weedle out of it.
Thank you councillor Green. Councillor Austin and councillor Arora, was it councillor?
I think that's our first person.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I lived here in Ramsgate for 35 years, but that street has always been a dangerous zone, I mean, because hundreds of children pass it there every day. And that accident happened, wasn't the first one, we had accident before that as well.
Yeah.
About 20 years ago maybe, something like that. So I think, and also like Leopold Street is another dangerous zone. So we have to prioritize which one we are going to have it first. If the ward is going to be the only one, you know, if one ward, oh sorry, each ward will have one speed or something, you know, so I don't know how, I think that would be the first one to do. And also like with the High Street funding, I don't know what's happening, that should have been done, it started about 12 months ago. Yeah, as far, as far as I remember, whenever I spoke into Rebecca, our town promoter, and, you know, the work was waiting and waiting for it to end there, so.
Thank you councillor Arora. Councillor Austin?
I was going to pick up on councillor Maitinson's comment about school streets, because, and speed restrictions around schools, because I went to a consultation event that was rather badly publicised about cycling and walking last week in Minster, and was talking to Adrian Verrell, who's responsible for local plan, and he was saying there are proposals for that type of restriction in Broadstairs around St George's and that area, because. And I think what we need, we need to be advocating for similar here. I've spent a lot of time recently in Maidstone, not unrelated to a by-election that's happening tomorrow for KCC, and I noticed that schools in Maidstone have, not universally, but a number of them have 20 mile an hour limits and restrictions like you can only drive on this bit outside school hours, or that kind of thing, also restrictions that have never been before. We need to be looking at what range of powers are open to KCC, and to be pushing really hard for some greater safety around our schools.
Thank you councillor Austin. Councillor Green, you wanted to say?
Yeah, that could do something for the name of planning council, which is current. I think the idea of ward priorities, ward highways priorities is a good thing. But the next meeting is possible. And I understand, Chair, that you attend the levelling up steering group on behalf of Ramsgate.
Screeching.
Why can't you report on what's happening?
Well, we had the meeting, so that's to say the next meeting is not until, not until.
You haven't been having meetings?
No.
You mean they haven't been having?
We haven't been having any.
Because of the election and everything.
No, I haven't been having, because the last admini, sorry Chair.
No, no, if you respond to that.
The last administration decided that the meetings would only be held bi-monthly, instead of monthly, and there's none before the election for weeks, you know, and also the first one has been put in the diary for, say, the end of this month. So we've had none since the last, since, I don't know, where was that, where would that be? March? February, March?
Okay.
So as soon as I know anything, I'll be reporting back here.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Councillor Dark, you've got your hand up, councillor Austin?
There were various other hotspots as well, especially considering Cheltenham House School, which I might say two of my sons went there, but not in their case, but, I mean, the children pour in and out of that station. I mean, I had to go on a school run, and I had, just so happens, I was at a school elsewhere. And on the way back, I'd come round where they're all bunching up desperately trying to get across to that station.
A hundred of them.
It's dangerous for everybody else.
That corner is really.
Really good.
Councillor Austin, sorry.
I just wanted to say, picking up on the matter of the levelling up, and I think I may have mentioned this.
I just wanted to say picking up on the matter of the levelling up, and I think I may have mentioned this at a previous meeting, I have requested that all the regeneration projects, reporting on all the regeneration projects in terms of spend and in terms of meeting targets for timing. Uh, that we look at that at every single OFIM scrutiny meeting because I think it's vital that, that that is closely scrutinised and monitored and that it's done so in public so that residents can see what is happening.
Okay.
We're coming round here, having a piece of, I don't hit one and I don't know.
Thank you, thanks. Yeah, I've seen a lot of, are any of our members on the JTB as TDC councillors? Uh, this has been a missing link in the highways problems.
I asked to be, but I was turned down.
I, I will be on my joint transport board.
Yeah.
Um, first meeting was cancelled, but the second one looks like it's good to go. And I'm more than happy to put anything forward.
Okay.
For months.
Thank you councillor Nixon.
Make the proposal.
That's a good thing if we propose.
I, I, I think we are after considering support the proposal, um, and listening to the, to what the town clerk said. Um, if we can, if, if we're happy for the, the residents' concern. If they do a crowdfunding or whatever thing it is, and if they, if it can come through Ramsgate Town Council. Uh, then I think then we could hopefully help, help with that. I think we would do anything that we can, that we should do everything that we can
Yes.
to help to get this in place.
Yeah, okay. Yes, who would like to second that? Um, councillor Austin, well, we're going to continue, yes. Could we, uh, take a vote on that, please? See, it's you now, so.
Outside.
And that's, Dan, please. Okay, is there anything else that we need to discuss tonight? No? Okay, we need to say goodbye to the general public, finish the meeting there.